Facebook Live. I am Senator Paul Formica. I am grateful and have the wonderful pleasure and honor to serve the 20th district here in the state of Connecticut, which is a portion of Old Saybrook, Old Lime, East Lime, Waterford, and London, a portion of Montville, Basra, and Salem. And you know, we have a great district, we have a great state, and we're all undergoing some huge challenges right now with this pandemic, with this with this virus that is just coming through our state, our country from across the world. We were here last time on Facebook Live talking with Dr. Setu Vora, who is the chief medical officer for the Mashentucket Pequot Tribe, and we talked a lot about the effects of the physical effects of the virus and what to look for and how to be mindful of not to be contagious, not to try to catch the virus, stay put, stay home, stay social distance. And we had a great conversation about that. You can find that, I believe, on my Facebook page or a link will be on my website. And if you wanted to review that, the good doctor was very, very, very knowledgeable, very efficient, very professional. So please look that up. Today, we are joined by Irina Taylor. Irina is a licensed marriage and family therapist for United Community and Family Services, and she's joining us today to talk about, you know, the mental health side of what happens during a pandemic. Sorry, my phone's ringing. And so she's going to give us a little tip on, a lot of tips on what's going on inside the home when we're isolation. Now, what, you know, what can we expect if we have our kids around the house? Our husband, our wives around the house, we're working remotely. You know, mom and dad are seniors, all kinds of challenges for people all across the age spectrum when we're thrown into a new situation, a new situation. And it's new for all of us. The challenges are for all of us. So we're going to bring Irina on in just a minute. I just want to catch up, as you know, and as you can see, I'm two and a half weeks behind on my haircut now with the salons and the barbers all closed. And I'm growing, I'm growing a beard, a my pandemic beard. I'm, you know, I'm at home in my kitchen today. I spend most of my days at home on the phone with conference calls to to our leaders at the state Capitol, who speak to the governor's office each and every day as we try to manage the best way through this pandemic. I speak to a lot of the people around the district and try to provide support. And that's really what this hour is about. It's about being a resource, about not having all the answers because I don't. It's about giving you the opportunity to link into a subject that you may need help on, or you may want to find out about, or you may want to listen to. And we have all kinds of those links on senatorformica.com. Anything that we're talking about today with Irina, all of the mental health challenges that we have will be available as a link on senatorformica.com. If you want to talk to me about any issue, you can email me at paul dot formica at cga dot c t dot gov, paul dot formica at cga dot c t dot gov. And any questions that may arise from this hour or questions that you have sent in and we don't know the answers to, send an email. I have wonderful people, a support staff that is monitoring this this hour today. And if we don't have the answers for you today, then we're going to get the answers for you at some point in time after this show is over. So I want to just introduce any number of people that are stepping up to help and provide support and services for other people, other people, and other programs in the community. And one in particular, I just want to reach out to, it's called Mask Makers in Connecticut. They're sewing for the frontline. This is an all volunteer nonprofit group started by Maisie Stefan and several friends in Leadyard and Waterford around March 20th. So it's been almost a month and they just, their mission is to provide masks for frontline workers. They've had, there are up to 76 volunteers. They call themselves the Masketeers, and they're sewing and cutting and distributing, and they've helped produce over 8,000 masks to date, as well as other personal protection devices, including headbands, surgical caps, and innovations, including an ear-lit band. And these are made on 3D printers. So these folks know what they're doing. They liken themselves to Rosie the Riveter in World War II, who came out and supported their frontline and the Greatest Generation. They are interested in making our community safe and healthy. They've dropped off some masks. I'll kind of show you a little bit. Here's one of them. This is a flat three peated mask. It's pleated mask. It's distributed to frontline workers, like senior centers, nursing homes, doctors' offices, that kind of thing. They have those available. This is what they call a pocket mask. Here, can you see that? And this kind of ties, I guess, or, and that goes to hospital frontline workers. And this actually is designed to fit over an N95 mask. So these guys are very professional. And this one is kind of, looks like a headband, and I think we talked about that. And there's the, these are made on the 3D printers, ear-lit bands to lift the elastic back off the ears, you know, if you're wearing a mask, if you're a frontline worker and you're wearing a mask for a long shift, then this will be helpful for that. So I wanted to make you aware of the great work they're doing. They've been certified for Yale New Haven. They're in the process of being certified by Hartford Healthcare, and they're providing masks everywhere, Navy, the Coast Guard, local PDs, they're even, they're even custom embroidering some of these masks for the PD and local EMS folks to identify them in the community. And I want to make their presence known to all of you. Mask makers in Connecticut, it's www dot masketeers dot net, M A S K A T E E R S dot net. And please look up, look them up. They have a Facebook page. They have a GoFundMe if you want to help support them with fabric and any other support that they can get. And you can call Mais Stefan at 860-961-1820 with questions. Again, that information will be on my website moving forward. And they're, they're doing a great, great service for our community, and we thank them for that. And so if you're in need, please reach out. That's masketeers dot net. Before we get to Irina, I just want to remind you that on this website, senatorformica.com also is the daily updates from the governor's office. Again, these are his numbers. These are the numbers that he's providing, and I believe he's, he's usually on this time in the afternoon. This is being, this is being sent live at 4:30 on Thursday, the 16th. So since Tuesday's update, an additional 766 positive COVID-19 have been reported, bringing statewide total of 14,755. There have been over 50,100 tests that have been done here in the state of Connecticut, and a little over 1,900 people have been hospitalized as a result of this virus. You may remember that Dr. Vora talked about that being the magic number watching, the amount of people being hospitalized and the fatalities is to see where we are, whether we're plateauing. We know that in Europe, it was a 60-day thing. We're coming up on 35, 40 days. So hopefully, by social distancing and doing all the things that, you know, we're learning prevents the spread of this virus, we can, we can move up that time and be in and out of here. The governor talks about May 20th now as an extension on school and business closures. There's going to be some more conversation about that. And there's an advisory group. My thought would be to have industry professional groups, you know, barbers and salons, those industry groups that support those groups. Let them come up with a process on how we reopen. Restaurant groups, hotel groups, et cetera, trying to figure out how do we restart, re-jump the economy? I think it's going to take a concerted effort to do that and a lot of collaboration and a lot of conversation. And so keep track of that again, senatorformica.com. You know, we, we have a lot of worries and it's, we worry about our health, we're worrying about our business, worrying about our jobs, worrying about school if we're kids, we're, the pressures are just mounting. And, and once again, I'm so pleased that Irina has offered to spend this hour with us. So we're going to bring her on and talk a little bit about, you know, your professional conversation. Let's, let's talk about what you would do and what you think about and offer some resources for the people that may be listening to this, to this broadcast today and where they might be able to find some help. So good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I think a lot of us, like you had mentioned, are experiencing, you know, everything that's going around similarly. We may have a different setup, meaning we may be a single person, we may have a spouse at home, we may have children at home, but we're all affected by the restrictions, we're all affected by the changes that are happening. So I think a lot of what we're seeing at UCFS, we're providing the telehealth services. So we're still able to provide treatment to individuals, although we're not able to see people in person. So we are continuing to, you know, remain connected with the community and provide the services. A lot that's going on is really, you know, learning a new routine and learning this new way of being. And I think what sometimes we struggle with is trying to continue to still have certain expectations of ourselves, certain expectations of our children, and it tends to get really frustrating. So I think what we're really working on is how can we best adjust? How can we work on shifting our thought process and focusing on what can we control? You know, schools may be out, you know, the children don't have recess. However, what can we do? You know, if they can't go to the playground, you know, can we have them play hot lava floor at home? So a lot of what we're really trying to work on is establishing new routines and continuing to be, you know, present in, you know, being mindful of what's going on. Another piece is also, you know, being overly focused on all the news and all of the media that can also feed into some of the anxieties. A lot of individuals have difficulty, especially sleeping at night, frequent waking and having, you know, difficulty going back to sleep because it is very worrisome what's going on. So really working on finding that balance about being informed, but also not letting it consume you completely.
Okay. So we're, I'm sorry, my phone is ringing behind me there. Can you hear that out there? You hear that, Irina?
I, no.
It's not that loud.
I hear it now.
So, so I apologize about that. But, you know, we're thrown in a situation that we're not used to being, you know. You get up, you may go to work all day long, and then someone may be the caregiver for the kids and get them on the bus and get them to school. And, you know, then you have the day to take care of the house and do what is you need to do. You may be a single mom, a single dad. You know, what are, now you're thrown into everybody's home. And, you know, what are kind of, what are some of the things that we can do with our kids or do with each other to try to, you know, mitigate this uncertainty in this new, this new way of, of life for, for right now? Because we got another three or four weeks anyway of this.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of it is the, the adjustment period. So for example, you know, couples, they're now, if they're not working maybe to the full capacity that they used to, they're home all the time. And it's really finding the balance of, you know, still having that alone time versus the couple time. We used to maybe have coping skills that included other people, maybe our social circle, friends, maybe it was the gym, maybe it was going out to a restaurant. And in a way, those coping skills are now stripped away. So again, I think going back to, so how can you still work with what you have? Well, that I heard.
I know I'm getting all these beeps and things on my computer, but that's okay.
For example, you know, being able to still take turns cooking. So when one person's cooking, the other person may be able to go for a walk. If you, you know, you know, somebody that likes, you know, to take long baths, you know, but finding that time to have for yourself is very important. So trying to find those resources that you do have. For children, again, structure and routine is still very important. So even if they are part of that to create a new schedule. So for example, you know, they can sit down as a family and they can work on, if they do have the distant learning, you know, when do we do that? When is lunchtime? What do we do between lunch and dinner? Maybe there's going to be some free play. A lot of, you know, parents, I know, are very focused on screen time and all of the recommendations about how much of screen time is appropriate. Unfortunately, right now, this is not something that we're really drilling down because most of the distant learning is remote done on some sort of a device. So you have to be in front of a screen. So I think a lot of flexibility and a lot of acceptance of letting go what we used to know as this is what is the right way and this is what we need to do, and really focusing on what works for you, what works for your family, and just being open to change, being open to accepting that it may not be what it used to be. But this is something that we can all create together, communicate with your family, include your children. I think if they're able to be part of making this new plan, so to say, and having, you know, depending how old your children are, having some sort of saying, you know, these are the, you know, snacks I would like to have, or these are some of the fun activities I would like to do. But you, as the adult and as the parent, you still set the parameters of, you know, well, after breakfast, it's learning, and then it's lunch, and then after that, you have some time to play. So I think that's still important to have some sort of normalcy and to reassure them that all of the...
Structure and resetting a new structure.
Exactly. And including them in that as, as much as that's appropriate for the family.
And, and you know, many parents are all of a sudden now the homeschool teacher.
Yes.
Trying to keep up on that.
Yes. I'm one of them. So I have to say, it's a, again, we're in this together in some capacity, right? We're all affected by it in some way. And I think it's very much this social distancing does not mean social isolation. And I think that's something that we also try to identify. What are some ways that you can still remain connected with your supports, families, friends? You can, you know, do what we're doing, kind of Zoom or FaceTime. You can, you know, emails, phone calls, all of that is not taken away. So I think if we, if we're able to look at, again, what can I control? What can I do instead of what can't I? And I think that feeds a lot of what choices we make and how we behave. And again, if we model as adults for our children, it will be, I think, easier for us to be more hopeful, for us to kind of project it onto them. And so then, again, if you wake up with a mindset of, you know, today is a good day, today I'm going to, you know, learn to cook something new, or I'm going to listen to some new music, I'm going to watch a YouTube video on home workouts, I want to try yoga. The gym is closed, but there's a bunch of workouts you can, you know, thankfully, the internet has so many resources that we can really look and learn new skills. So I think that's really good for, for parents, for adults, for couples to just continue to work on finding that new normal and again, shifting with what, working with what we have.
I was, I was great at reading Dr. Seuss to my kids. I don't know that I'd be a great teacher for my kids. So I, I really, you know, feel for, you know, being thrown into all of that. It's got to be, you know, it's got to be very difficult and nerve wracking. And to your point, you know, let's just make it fun, let's just make it a structure, let's just do the best we can and be inclusive with everybody, especially your kids. So is it, is it better, kids may be too young, or they may be too, I don't know, too, too busy to understand what's really going on out there, the dangers of this virus and why we're having to be in and what's happening? So in your view, is it better to be honest with, with the kids about what's going on? Or is it, you know?
Yes, I, I believe so. They should know what's going on, but I also believe that it should be, they should be informed, you know, in an appropriate way, meaning for their age. They have very nicely made videos to explain the virus to children, why the hand washing is important. There are certain songs that children are familiar with, so they can sing along and they know that the 20 seconds are up, and that's how long they need to wash their hands for. So I think, yes, it's important that they understand because they should be informed, but also that we shouldn't scare them and we shouldn't inform them in the way we would for adults. So there are definitely resources out there where we can, there's, you know, online books already. I have noticed a lot of the resources are out there. And we have created actually a website, and we have an email address here as well. So if there are any individuals that are interested in either getting services or getting more resources, or they want specific, you know, tips for, you know, couples, you can always reach out and we will do our best to get back to you and provide it to you as soon as possible as well.
All right. And your link will be on my website, senatorformica.com. But what is that, where, where should they go? What is your website?
So our website is the ucfshel healthcare dot org, but we also have an email that we have created, which is therapy@ucfs.org. And that will be filtered directly to myself and my supervisor. So we will be able to capture, you know, any and all feedback or, you know, inquiries that come from this casting, so.
And we have you on today because, you know, we know you, we know of your good work, we know of the work of UCFS in the community. It's in Norwich and London, it's, you know, throughout southeastern Connecticut. But certainly, there are other great providers that provide a lot of the services that you do. And, you know, please, if you're out there and a provider, you know, reach out to senatorformica.com, reach out to my email, and I will certainly include links to your organization as well. And we appreciate your expertise coming on. And, you know, we're talking about situations that are within the home. And, you know, here I am in my kitchen, and now it's a, it's a production studio here. Things are, right? And we're trying to figure out what we're doing. And, you know, some people are out of work. There could be a lot of stress with, with regard to that. You talked about the kids, you know, how are they learning? What, what's going on? There's a lot of things that we have on our website for distance learning, where you can, you know, link to a website, for, for example, Iconic Connecticut, where you can see and learn about parks and museums and churches and take a virtual tour while you're in the home and while you're not worried about social distancing. Places like the Mystic Seaport, for example, you know, you can learn about those things online, at home, with your family, with your kids, and then, you know, maybe plan an outing, right? Let's look at Mystic Seaport, let's look at the Beardsley Zoo in Bridgeport, or let's look at where we, you know, we might want to learn about, but also maybe when this is over, where can we go and have a family fun day? Do you agree that it's important to look, look ahead?
Yes. And I think one of the, one of the tips I had prepared to, you know, to share after the fact when we finish is also, you know, planning for when this is over. Because again, I know we're all stuck in it, we're trying to get through it, but also knowing that it will end. It may not end as soon as we want it to, it may not be exactly how we want it to be at the end. But I think even having a plan individually with your spouse, with your children even, what do we want to look forward to? Because I think that's important to have that goal, you know, like something that we're working towards, something that we can even plan for, right? We may not be able to put a date, you know, but we know, okay, maybe I want to do this. So I think that will be very, you know, encouraging and, you know, building more hope to have that goal and have something to look forward to.
And we live in the greatest district and the greatest state in the country, and there's so much to do and see here in the state of Connecticut. So by, you know, looking and planning online and then planning a family, a family fun day for, you know, the end of May or June, when we can get outside and these places begin to open slowly, because not going to be, you know, okay, next Tuesday, everybody's going to open. You know, it's going to be a phased-in opening. It's going to be different, things are going to be different. And the virus is going to be around, I think, for longer, but maybe in less of a degree than it certainly is now, or maybe in the next week, so that we can begin to open in ways that are safe. And I think that's very important, not only for our collective psyches, you know, to get back to a routine, you know, but also for our economy to try to do it. And I know the governor's working on that with a new group that he's trying to put together to help focus on that. So again, looking forward. Now, you know, we've talked about mom and dad, we talked about the kids being there, and, you know, maybe grandma and grandpa don't live in with us in the house, they may live across town, or they may live across the country, but they're experiencing the same thing. This is just not, you know, a southeastern Connecticut phenomenon. This is a worldwide phenomenon. So, you know, what about, you know, those, those of us my age, the, you know, the older generation that are, you know, what, what are some strategies to kind of help them and keep them safe? Because, you know, after a certain age, you know, after you're 60 or above, this virus becomes, you know, more dangerous. And what are some of the, what are some of the tips that you have on, for those, for that age group?
Right. And I think the fortunate piece that I've seen had already started, you know, developing is that there are specific hours for grocery shopping. And I think that was something that was really helpful because it demonstrated an insight into, yes, we need to protect certain age groups in different ways because they don't have the same maybe resources, and they should not have that exposure. So I think they, being mindful of...
Yeah, I'm trying to interrupt you, but I just want to, you know, be clear, the separate hours are for a certain age group and above, to protect the seniors, where there are only seniors in there in the stores or curbside pickup or whatever it is. But I just wanted to clarify, that's what you were talking about.
Right, right. And I think just to allow, you know, the crowding and also the different age group. I think being aware of the resources that are out there. So again, knowing that that is something that is, you know, available to them is very important because sometimes they don't have all the information through the media or through the internet. And I think being connected, if there are, you know, family members that they touch base with, to make sure to reach out to them and to say, hey, even if we live in different states, is there something that you need? And then knowing what the resources are in that state, in that country that they're in. But definitely following all of the guidelines and all of the recommendations. For example, you had mentioned the masks earlier. So if that is something that they need to be wearing, to be aware of, so a lot of information and communication from the caregivers. And I know there's, you know, maybe grandchildren. So even if they are engaged in making some crafts and being able to send it over just to brighten their day, to have maybe these interactions when they are able to still see each other and to have that contact, just being present, being available, and providing the information, I think, is the biggest piece. Because sometimes we assume that we all are collectively receiving the same information, but being mindful that that may not be the case. So checking in and just letting them be aware of what's going on and how to best protect themselves.
And to make sure they have the tools that they need, to have the supplies they need, the food.
Exactly.
To make sure that they can kind of weather another few weeks here, you know, here at home. And, you know, we have, you know, these things which are, which are great. We're doing this Zoom, Facebook Live thing, we can see each other clearly. Not a lot of folks have that opportunity, right? When you're, you may not even have a computer, you may not even have a cell phone, but if...
Or you may have it, but you don't have somebody to help you hook it up or start it. And I think, again, my parents are in Connecticut and, you know, they're in that age bracket. So I have experienced that myself, knowing that, you know, they're expected to do maybe remote work, they're expected to join Zoom meetings, but they've never heard of it. So even if you do have the technology and you have internet in your home, again, this is something very new to a lot of us. And just being able to talk them through this when you can't physically be there, I think it's, it's another challenge. But again, something to be mindful of and be prepared to help, you know, people with.
Yeah. And if we could, you know, if they do have FaceTime or, or they're on social media or they're doing an email, it's certainly a whole lot easier to keep and connect because, you know, a lot of folks don't understand, you know, the challenges that you can't really, you know, it's hard to tell the five-year-old, you can't go see grandma and grandpa when you're used to doing it every day. So there's a lot of those challenges that we have.
And it's a lot of, you know, I think the other piece too, a lot of people are experiencing a lot of loss right now and just with, you know, graduations or weddings or, you know, holidays, a lot of things, maybe they... And just with, you know, graduations or weddings or, you know, holidays, a lot of things, maybe vacations. So things that we were looking forward to and even something like you had said, visiting relatives. And I think that it's okay to recognize that and not feel guilty for having those feelings. I think that sometimes individuals tend to be harsher on themselves because they expect, you know, but I need to be okay. I'm so selfish for thinking that, you know, about my vacation or about my graduation. But it is very valid to have those feelings and, and to allow that and then to work through it and to, again, then plan ahead. You know, what is going to be after this? Can we have a graduation party afterward and recreate something? But I think just allowing yourself to, to feel what you're feeling, but also not to remain stuck in a place that's very negative is very important.
So recognizing your feelings, good or bad or in the middle is very important, right? Talk to yourself and say, okay, I'm feeling angry or I'm feeling happy or I'm feeling confused. And then, you know, try to find out why or, you know, and maybe use some of the resources that you have at your disposal out there and the links that we're going to provide on our website, senatorsfromica.com, where you can go and kind of, and kind of get some help. But you're right, there are a lot of, you know, seniors that have worked hard to get to this point in high school or college. And they're not able to, they're, they're not able to graduate. They're not able to walk because we're not having them gathering. So it's a plan, something for the future to recognize and honor that, you know, that achievement, even though it may be in a different way. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things, you know, that are going to be infected and affected and impacted. And the most important thing is to make sure that we stay safe. And until this is over, and this will pass. You know, my dad used to say, this too shall pass. And things do, they pass. And, you know, we're seeing it around the world that it, it has a a, a way of returning to normal after sixty or ninety days. And we're going to gradually, you know, we're going to gradually do that. So it's important to stay focused and, and to stay in contact with each other and understand where the resources are. What else can you think of? We talked about family and homes and mom and dad and the kids and grandpa and grandma. And, you know, any other advice that you want to, you want to talk about something that I've not thought about here?
I think just general, just mindfulness and grounding techniques. That again, when you do feel, you know, overly anxious, when you feel that, you know, your kids are driving you crazy or your spouse is getting on your nerves and you're all in this home together, you know, again, I think it's important to take some time for yourself. And that may be if you have a, you know, a basement and you maybe have a gym down there or if you can go outside and garden, or if you can take a drive and just listen to music by yourself for ten, fifteen minutes. It's the little things, again, it always goes back to what can I do? What is something that I can do versus what I cannot? It is important maybe even to focus on your breathing, right? So sometimes when we are stressed, anxious, worried, we tend to hold our breath, right? So maybe just go in within yourself and just focusing on taking a deep breath, holding it, letting it go. So as you are doing that, it's really shifting from what are you thinking about and what are you worried about to actually what's happening with my body? And again, meditation is great for that. There's yoga that you can do. A lot of, you know, checking in with your body and just taking that time.
Yeah, a- and you know, my daughter just texting me, you know, I'm, I'm not allowed to go through the family business because of, you know, I'm in that age where it's more susceptible for me and more dangerous for me. So I'm at home and what am I going to do at home all day? I'm used to being an active guy, right? But, but I've raked almost my entire lawn. You know, I'm working out a little bit more, exercising and, and doing these things that, you know, I don't, I don't often get a chance to do or we don't do. So I'm trying to focus on, you know, those types of things around the house. And, and do that. But, you know, Ally tells me that, you know, Dr. Bora talked about shifting our definition of love and that, think of social distancing as that act of love. You know, and I, and I know that my kids are very worried about me. You know, everybody's worried about everybody else and that's part of the anxiety that we're dealing with. But by, you know, by paying attention to that, by following the social distancing guidelines, by staying home, by doing what we're going to do, wearing our masks if we think it's important, wearing gloves, being mindful of where we are, that that social distancing is, you know, really an act of love and people are trying to do the best for everybody. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful the end of this thing. And again, I, I know we're coming out of this. We're the greatest country in the history of the world. And we have the greatest professionals. Thank you for being here. You know, we need to come out of this, I think, and I think we're going to have a little softer hearts when we do. And, and hopefully it'll, it'll change the way we, we are and, and be toward each other, you know.
I hope so too. And I've heard a lot of people already talk about the, the things that they've almost taken for granted, you know. That now they're like, oh my God, I just wish I could, you know, be stuck in traffic again, you know, something that, that was something that bothered us. But something as silly as that, you know, just being, you know, coming to work. A lot of people are, you know, I know it was a drag to wake up and have to be in the office or have to get the kids on the bus. And then they were struggling in the morning. A lot of people are now looking at a lot of things differently. And I'm hoping as well, like you said, that after this, we are not taking so many things for granted and actually appreciating them a little bit more, you know.
And, and reaching out and trying to offer some help. And there's a lot of, a lot of things that we can do. You, you know, we're, we're talking about a whole lot of things. We're talking about a lot of services. We're talking about a lot of situations we find ourselves in, our kids, our grandma, grandpa, our jobs. You know, we're working remotely. Hard to work remotely sometimes when you got the three of you running around behind you because maybe the daycare's closed. I mean, there's a lot of challenges, a lot of patients that, that are going to have to be done. And, and, you know, in situations like this, sometimes the same expectations don't always apply, right? We can't expect to do the same amount of work or the same quality of work when we have all these distractions at home or when we're not there, right? So, and I think you pointed out a little bit early on, you know, be mindful of the situation and be accepting of the situation. Is that a good way?
Right, and I think that's the, the expectation of ourself, you know, the productivity, the having to do things to, you know, I'm not a fan of these things that are out there now saying, you know, well, if you don't learn a new language, you know, what have you been doing with your time? You're surviving, you know, you're doing the best that you can. You're supporting yourself. You're supporting your family. That's what you're doing. And I think that has taken a whole lot out of us. I don't think this is the time for us to place these expectations on people to be overly productive. And again, to function in a different situation, you know, the same that you were functioning pre this pandemic. So really about managing that expectation. And if you are working from home, the feedback I have really received is that people work more. You don't have your coworkers that you can walk and talk to and take that, you know, water cooler break and, and just kind of chit chat for a little bit. You tend to just sit at your desk and you're, you know, immersed in your work and you, you know, sometimes the self-care is out the window. So a lot of actually the remote working that, you know, sometimes we think might be easier and might be less work right now. You may have children in the other room that are waiting for you to, you know, start their distant learning with. So it's very challenging. You have new technology, you know, you're being expected to do meetings through Zoom. And you may have spotty internet, right? So there's so, so many things that can contribute to even more anxiety and even more, you know, worry. So again, I think it's really about managing your own expectation of yourself and being able to communicate that. I think not holding that in and not, you know, feeding those internal dialogues about, you know, I should be doing more. I need to be doing more. It's really about, okay, well, this is the best that I can do. This is what I need help with. This is where I can go and turn for help. My coworkers that are not here in the building, like sometimes we pick up the phone and call each other. Sometimes we do the Zoom meetings just to touch base. And I've heard really good feedback that it's been very helpful to have that sense of normalcy, even though we're not where we were, but we're still connected. Again, we're not isolating ourself. And I think that goes for couples, families. Again, don't isolate yourself. Still connect with people. You know, not in person, but you know, through whatever media you have, through emails, through letters and just stay connected.
Yeah, important to manage your expectations and don't, you know, no need to be a superhero anymore to try to get it done. Just throttle it back. Let's just take it day by day and move forward until, you know, this thing does pass and do it.
Right.
And, you know, we've talked a lot about services and you briefly mentioned early on, you know, teleservices, telemedicine, tele. I don't know what other terms there are for that, you know, how does.
Telehealth.
Telehealth, thank you. Well, how does that, how does that work? If, if, you know, people are out there listening to us and they're going, you know, I can really relate to that. You know, I think I need to see someone or ask someone or be with someone. How does, how does telehealth work in terms of what UCFS is, is offering and how do people go about doing, getting involved with that?
So all they would need is to have an email address and internet connections. It can be through a laptop, a computer, any smartphone, any device that has a camera. And what happens is we send an email to the individual. The email contains a link. The person clicks on the link, enables their camera, and then this is pretty much what you and I are doing. This is what the therapy looks like. So we're able to see each other, we're able to hear each other and have a session through telehealth. Could be, so we have the locations, we have variety of services. And like I said, we will share, we have a PowerPoint that I can share with everybody and I can send out. But for different populations, we have the email that's also going to filter if you have any questions, if you have suggestions. We can take that as well and we'll be able to respond. It's a therapy@ucfs.org. And that will directly come to myself and my supervisor.
And, and insurance kind of works the same way or is that?
The insurance is covering it. So that's been also fantastic because that was also being concurrently done as we were launching this telehealth. So our IT team and our EHR team has been amazing and have, you know, they've really done a great job making this available, making this happen so quickly to be able to still remain connected to the community, to provide the services to them. And again, to have some sort of normalcy that they were really used to, that they looked forward to. Maybe not in the same way, but they're still able to, to have us there to support them, to walk them through this until we get back to business as usual.
And, and, you know, somebody said to me, once the only thing constant is change. And, and I think more than ever, that seems to be, you know, the mantra of the day. And, and everything changes all the time, every time we try to do something. It's, it's different because of the situation that we find ourselves in. But it's most important to be mindful of your physical health, be mindful of your kids and your family's physical health. Try to support the social distancing and make sure that you don't say, oh, well, I can go to this house and visit or we can have people over. You know, holidays, we just went through Easter and, you know, you, you're talking to people on the phone. We did, we did a house party or a Zoom and, you know, everybody got together afterward Easter. And those are, those are difficult, but those, there are ways we can do it. And, you know, we're going to get better as we move this on. So I just want to thank you very much for, you know, sharing your expertise and your time and your talents with us. And all of the things that the great people at UCFS do each and every day, not just during these difficult times of pandemic. But each and every day, you provide so much to the community where we live and we can't thank you enough for that. And all the professional team out there. And I think, you know, this, this may spawn a new career for you as the spokesperson for, for the organization out there. You could, you could be going nationwide as a result of this.
They're not late.
It could be a new show that you're going to make. But, you know, seriously, all kidding aside, thank you for being with us. If you, you have a PowerPoint you want to put up there on the screen or do you just say what you have and we can check our website?
So I think I can share some of what we had put together just briefly. But yes, I would like to also provide it to you all so you have it as a reference. But these are, let me make sure you can see it. Can you see?
I, I see it on the screen. I don't.
So these are the locations that we have.
Okay, so why don't you talk a little bit about that and then kind of run through that briefly? And then we're coming up on, you know, forty-five minutes. So am I right? Four thirty, you have forty-five minutes?
So these are just some of our programs and services that we provide. So again, we do have a variety of services and you can definitely reach out and we can talk more in depth and provide brochures. But pretty much everybody is still, we have elder care service community, base services outpatient. I had broken it down a little bit, so for a variety of presenting concerns. And again, so here is the email I was referencing, the therapy@ucfs.org. You can always go to our website. Our mission is to improve the health and wellbeing of the community. So we're always looking to help people to make sure that we're available so they can reach out to us. Again, even if they're not interested in services, but they need resources, they need support or they want to just get more information about, you know, what can I do with my children? What can I do as an individual? I need more help relaxing. I need more help sleeping. But this is where we are. So we have been around for over a hundred years. Feel free to reach out to us. And I will forward this to you as well. So you have it.
Okay, we will, we will put that on senatorsfromica.com along with any other healthcare provider that wants to supply us with information. On, on any of that. I'm viewing Irene's screen. It says, so what do I do, Sarah, to push this? Okay, I think we're all right. I'd, I'd lost some of the capabilities here. But Irene, thank you very much for your time. We, we do have some questions outside of the healthcare. And the people have sent in.
Irene, can you stop sharing your screen?
Uh, let me see. Yep, one second.
Thank you.
I'm working off of two screens. There we go.
Okay, all right. So now we have Irene there and Sarah, you want to move that, move Irene up a little bit? And maybe refocus that screen for our next little segment or how do you want to do that? I have.
Irene, you can stop sharing your video. That way we've got. That's the center.
Okay, so.
All right.
So are we going to leave Irene then?
Am I all set?
Yeah, I, I guess so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to hang around for a few minutes. If I lose you for some reason because I don't have a teenager helping me with the technology. You know, then, then thank you very much for sharing your time.
Thank you for having me.
I do have some great people helping me. That's Sarah in the background who's, who's kind of making sure all this is happening. So thank you to Sarah and Peggy and Kim and all of those folks that help support me each and every day. Additional questions and answers, I hope, anything being done policy-wise to support nursing homes and long-term, you know, we focused on, on those here with other state representatives. Representative McCarty and I and Cheeseman have been working on getting the resources for these nursing homes. Who are seeing an increase in uptick in active COVID infections within the nursing home. Now, we've had calls with the Department of Public Health to try to make sure that getting these PPEs to, to these folks and making sure they have the tools that they need to have to, to keep their people safe. Because it is the most vulnerable population is a priority. And so we have been working hard about that. There's a question about landlords, you know, one of the governor's executive order spared folks the opportunity to pay rent for the next few months. They can pay it late. They will still owe it. And, but, you know, what, what are landlords, you know, what happens to landlords? We still, as a landlord, have other charges that we have to maintain each and every month. Even though we're not collecting rent. So what are some of the problems are, are going to have there with landlords? And I agree, that's, I think, one of the unintended consequences of, of the governor's executive order. And it's something that we really have to work on fixing. Because while we have to be mindful of everybody's situation and make sure that they can afford to live, we also have to make sure that they can have a place to come back to from the website, so, from the landlord. So if you're a landlord out there, if you have specific issues, you know, give me an email, paul dot fromica at cga dot ct dot gov. Or go to my senate website and give me your specific situation. And that goes for any of you, but we're talking about landlords now. And I will try to help. And I will try, uh, to help. Um, you know, the governor is, is asking everyone to wear masks and I don't think that that's a mandate yet. I think it's a strong suggestion, but people are saying, you know, if he says we have to wear them, where do we get them? Again, the answer is I don't know that. Uh, we're trying to find more masks and the state is trying to get more masks and secure more masks, but so is the rest of the country. And they're finding it's a little difficult to do. But I think that's something that the administration is gonna take into effect at some point moving forward. Again, if you need masks, you know, try to reach out to me and I'll, I'll see what I can do. Um, we know mask makers, uh, is doing a great job. I talked about them early on in the, in the program here, and that's www dot masketeers dot net, M A S K A T E E R S dot net. They are making thousands of masks with hundreds of volunteers. Um, and they have a Facebook page and so they will help, uh, people get masks, I believe. And, uh, uh, those are most of the questions, uh, that I have here. I have, uh, something coming in on my, on my phone about local farms, restaurants, uh, grocery stores, uh, make sure that you know, when you're placing an order for food for takeout or food from a grocery store or, or whatever it is you're, you know, placing and make sure that, you know, you can ask about curbside, touchless, contactless, uh, transactions, uh, they're out there. The, the less we come in contact with each other, the, the less likely we are uh, to spread this virus. Family farms are coming into, uh, you know, a critical time where they're beginning their harvest, they're beginning to plant for their harvest. And there are a lot of manufacturers that are suffering as a result of the downturn in the economy. So, uh, you know, try to support, uh, you know, your local community. Uh, if you have questions in your local community on my website, I have a link to every one of the eight town municipal websites uh, on senatorfromica.com, any one of the eight communities that I represent. Uh, if you live in Basra and London or Montville, uh, or any of the other towns, you can find your local website, um, on senatorfromica.com and that might lead you uh, to the answer that you're talking about. You know, last time, uh, we ended, uh, you know, the Facebook Live conversation with, people around the house and, you know, you need, you need to cook, you need to eat, you need to feed people. And what are some of the tips that, uh, you know, perhaps we can offer? I talked about a, a chicken chili last time and, uh, you know, we were kind of rushed for time. If you want that recipe, you know, uh, send me a request to my Facebook page or to the senatorfromica.com. I'll get you the recipe for the chicken chili. Uh, today I thought we'd talk a little bit about, uh, another way to cook chicken and that is one of my favorite ways. And let's see if we can figure this out. All right. So I have, uh, I have a, a couple of things here that I thought I'd give a shot at. And that is, um, and that is chicken, uh, chicken cutlets. It's one of my kids' favorite meals. And it's an easy meal to do and you act like you're a gourmet chef when you do it. And, uh, so, you know, you start with, you start with a pan, have a little bit of pan and then, uh, some canola oil. I like to use canola oil because it, uh, you know, it's light and it, it stands the heat. Olive oil breaks down a little bit. Uh, and I have, uh, breadcrumbs, Italian breadcrumbs. And I, even if you want to do gluten-free, you can do the same recipe with gluten-free breadcrumbs. So one of the things that, that's important for this, uh, for this recipe is you have to prepare the chicken for the frying pan. And the reason we bread it is to protect the quality of the meat in the frying pan. Uh, so we have these thin sliced chicken breasts. You can get them that way or you can cut breasts nice and thin. And one of the things that I like to do, uh, with these breasts is to kind of, is to kind of flatten them out a little bit. And so, let me see if I can get the, I have a cutting board, I have a piece of the chicken there. And if you start banging the, the, the chicken with the, with the mallet, or in this case, I'm gonna use the backside of the ladle, chicken will fly everywhere. And chicken is very volatile, can make people sick. So you want to just take a little Ziploc bag and cover it, the chicken. And then all you do is just kind of, just bang it around and flatten it a little bit. Careful to keep all of these things separate. And then we'll drop it in there. And what I have in here is a few eggs. I mixed a little bit of milk in here because the eggs will help the breading adhere to the chicken. And so we just do a little fresh eggs. And we roll that around in there. We have our pan heating up. And again, our breadcrumbs, we're just gonna flip the, make sure that the breading gets on each of those breadcrumbs. Each on a piece of the chicken. And we'll just lay it into the oil as it's heating up. So we have two and you can see that nice sizzle. And so the idea is nice, flat. You can see how that it's sizzling up there and the olive, and the canola oil is working. And you want to just cook it till it's a nice golden brown, um, a couple of minutes on each side. A good rule of thumb is ten minutes to the inch of thickness when you're cooking, uh, these types of things. And you can see already, these things are moving forward. And the nice part about this meal, you see, I prepared a few of them already. And I have some chicken. This is what it looks like when it's done. These are great. You can add, uh, Parmesan. Um, have a chicken Parmesan meal, put some tomato sauce on it, some cheese, serve it over pasta. You can cut it up and serve it in a nice green tossed salad. You can make the greatest sandwich ever when you add cheese or lettuce, tomato or olive oil or, or whatever you need. It's a great versatile dish. It's great tasting and it makes you sound like, it makes you, makes you feel like a gourmet cook when you're done. So chicken cutlets, if you want this recipe, um, please feel free to give me a shout and I'd be happy to do that. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to come to you today live, uh, and talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we're facing, not only physically but mentally. I want to thank Irene Taylor, uh, from United Community Family Services for spending the hour with us and talking of, you know, talking about her expertise and providing us opportunities of where to find help. And remember, reach out to your, reach out to your people, reach out to your kids. If you see them, they're, they're troubled. Mom and dad or grandpop, you see that they're troubled. Try to spend a few minutes on the phone or social distancing from them if you don't live with them and try to find out what's going on. So that you can then provide the links and the opportunities to some of these places that we have today. So senatorfromica.com will have all of the stuff we talked about plus more. I will close with, uh, you know, the unemployment situation, uh, has been very difficult. The system has been completely overloaded. Um, it's been too long to get a lot of these, uh, support checks out. My understanding is there's a new software. It's supposed to be in effect today, uh, and it's supposed to move things forward. And my understanding is by, from, uh, from what I'm hearing from the governor's office, that it will be another four, five, six, seven days and they will be all caught up. But if you have a specific situation, send me an email, paul dot fromica at cga dot ct dot gov. And I will try to help loosen up, uh, some of the things for you. Whether you're self-employed or, or unemployed and, and struggling during this difficult time. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Sarah, for helping me out. Thank you, Irene, for being our great guest. And please stay safe. Thank you, everybody.